This regular meeting of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees is called to order at 7:02 PM on February 5th, 2015. At this time, would you please join me in standing as Richard Fleming opens, begins our board meeting with the opening prayer and then Mr. Matthews will lead us in the pledge of allegiance to the U.S. and Texas flag.
Bow your heads, please. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the many blessings that you continue to bestow upon our district, continue to lead and guide our district's leadership. May you always continue to give us the wisdom to make the right decision and continue to give us inspiration to meet the future, to meet the needs of the future. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Please be seated. Thank you all for being here this evening, and if you allow me, I have a few administrative things to, that I need to make you aware of. As a district, we dedicate all of our effort and resources to our goal of high achievement for all students. And of course, the board uses this goal in our determination, deliberation, decision of all of activities. You will get to see all of our deliberation, decisions, and actions of the board in open session, with the exception of some items which may be discussed in closed session, which is stipulated by the Texas Government Code, Section 551, commonly known as the Open Meetings Law. And these items typically deal with personnel matters, consultation with our attorneys, and real estate. For the record, all board members are here, with the exception of Ms. Wattin, who is ill. However, we do constitute a quorum and conduct business on behalf of the school district. Also, as required by our board policy, BBD Local, at each meeting, we will announce and be recorded in the minutes, the name of each board member who has completed the required training, or who has exceeded the required hours of training, or who is deficient in the required training as of the date of the meeting before any vote of the board is taken. Let the minutes reflect, at this time, that all members of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees have completed or exceeded the required hours for 2014, or in, and are in the process of requiring hours for the year 2015. That being said, we will move on to Agenda Item 2, which is recognition of special guests and announcements. Dr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Good, members of the board. To our audience, thank you. We are honored that you're spending the evening with us. We know it's a little cold tonight, but, you know, the reframe is you could be in New York, right? It's a lot colder, so, thank you for coming tonight. We're going to begin with our VIP celebration, and, you know, sometimes, thank you is just not enough. You need an act of gratitude to show your appreciation, and our VIP celebration and recognition is that act. It's our act of gratitude to show our educators how much we appreciate, appreciate them for all the work that they do. And so tonight, we invite family and friends here tonight. When your VIP is introduced, please join them by standing and participating with us in this act of gratitude. And now at this time, Mr. Good, will you join me in the, in the front?
Mr. Good, members of the board, Dr. Burns and colleagues. My name is Aurora St. Laurent, and I have the pleasure of serving as an assistant principal at Vivian Field Middle School. I also have the greatest privilege to introduce Ms. Betty Lee, our ESL department manager, and our very own important profession of teaching candidate from Vivian Field. Ms. Lee started in CFB ISD 14 years ago at Vivian Field. She graduated from Stephen F. Austin with a double major in English and Spanish. She's a newlywed to John Lee, who is also a CFB teacher and works at Freeman Elementary. Her beautiful daughter Sophie is a CFB student who loves spending time with her mother reading books and listening to music ranging from Broadway musicals to Taylor Swift and One Direction. Now Betty is not just your normal J.R. Tolkien fan. She married another Lord of the Rings fan and faithfully carries a pocket version of The Hobbit. She has such a love for reading that she would willingly give anyone a copy who has not had the privilege to read her science fiction trilogy. Betty began her teaching career in academia for two years and came to CFB ISD as quickly as she could. Betty comes from a long line of education. Her father joins us tonight, and he was an East Texas superintendent. During that time, he gave Betty advice to pursue her certificate in ESL. He predicted that it would be a fast-growing area and a demand for the future. Her father does not give advice lightly, so she took it, and she became certified in her true calling as a Vivian Field newcomer teacher. As that teacher, she is the first face that a new child to our country sees as their American teacher. She is perfect for the job. Betty welcomes our new students with compassion that is absolutely unmatched. She has high expectations for all children, knowing though that her students have the hardest road ahead of them, and they also have the most gain from education. This is all shown through evidence of her kindness and respect toward everyone in our building. One of her students wrote, "Thank you, Mrs. Lee. You've been so nice to all of us, and you have a real tender heart. I am so grateful for having you in my class because thanks to you, all of my friends and me will learn English very quickly." Another student said, "Oh, my gosh, Mrs. Lee. She is an angel to me. She's a blessing from God, and I thank God all the time for Mrs. Lee, and she tells me all the time," this is the most important thing, "that I have to continue with my education no matter what." Her colleague wrote, "She is caring and so giving of herself to ensure that every student feels welcome in her classroom, whether it's the first day in class or the last. She is committed to making sure that every student becomes successful in their educational life." Finally, she just had a significant experience in a glimpse of her impact over time. Just two weeks ago, a prior student came to visit her and to thank her for teaching him. This is what she said about the visit. His name is Edgar Gonzalez. He's currently attending law school at Rutgers University, and he's going into immigration law. He attended Field and was one of her newcomers in sixth grade. He was a quiet, timid little guy who came with a blank slate. He was just like 99.9% of the students that I see every day in my classroom. Some aren't as quiet and shy, but all of them are eager to learn and face seemingly unsurmountable challenges. They must learn English as quickly as possible while trying to learn the content at the same time. Not only that, but many of them are dealing with the pain of leaving home and their families behind. She said, "I was so proud to see the student and what he is doing with his life. He was able to speak to my newcomers and share those experiences. He started at level zero, just like them, and has worked so hard to find success and make himself better." They were able to see that they too can achieve what they set their heart and minds to. So congratulations to you, Mrs. Lee, or hashtag Viv Nation VIP. Your influence on our students is invaluable, and you make our vision for success occur for every student who walks through our door.
My name is DeeDee Lacy, and I'm the proud principal of McLaughlin-Strickland. And today, we are here to celebrate and introduce our newest member of the very important profession of teaching, Esperanza Hiltz. Esperanza once thought she would become an attorney. Thankfully, she started with us as an amazing instructional assistant. She soon started attending TWU to become a bilingual teacher. As soon as she was certified, we hired her as a third-grade bilingual teacher, where she has done an outstanding job the last four years. The attorney side of Esperanza still shines through with her passion for equality and justice and culture diversity. She advocates providing every opportunity for all students, especially for bilingual students and gifted students. This is her, this explains her avid pursuit of her master's degree, where she's attending SMU to get her degree in bilingual education with a gifted, talented focus. What is clear from talking to Esperanza's students is that she loves and respects each and every one of them. Haiti said, "She respects us, and she expects us to respect each other." Denham added, "She never, ever yells at us." Because the students feel this love and respect, the learning quickly follows in Ms. Hiltz's class. Delilah said, "She's all, she's always wanting to help us. When I first started multiplication, I didn't even know five times one, but she did not give up on me, and now I know almost all my facts." Drossio was quick to point out that when everyone, or when anyone learns something new and gets the answer correct, we celebrate together. And Yedira wanted to make sure we added, "She's not only smart, she's also very pretty." Her kids truly love her as much as she loves them. In speaking to her colleagues, the same describing words came up over and over. She's organized, passionate, excellent, leader, inspiration. This just proves that it's not just a job for Esperanza, it's what she loves. Even after teaching a full day, organizing, grade-level planning, activities, tutoring, organizing school activities such as multicultural night, sunshine, she still goes to class at night to continue her learning. And yet, she still mentors new teachers, student teachers. She manages to come every day to school happy to be here and happy to help others. In everything she is involved in, we've seen her contributions go above and beyond. Even her emails are worth saving, just for the sheer neatness. Ms. Shepherd says it just right. Ms. Hiltz has an inspiration, Ms. Hiltz has been an inspiration for me as a new teacher. I am looking, I'm always looking at veteran teachers for advice and guidance, and she is always there. She has been on our, she has been our team leader for the past two years, and she's truly the glue that holds us together. Not to mention, I am in constant competition with her. Not in a way that is perceived to be better than her, but in a way that pushes me to be better than my, better myself, and we all need those kind of people around us. Finally, I agree with Mrs. Gonzalez, who says, "Esperanza's a great leader, who always remains professional, caring, and a wonderful role model. I am so proud of her for pursuing her masters." We agree together that she is not only a future instructional leader, but a name that we'll remember in this field. She's absolutely deserving of VIP. Her spirit touches not only her students, but every person who has the pleasure of meeting her.
Good evening, Mr. Good, Dr. Burns, and members of the Board of Trustees. My name is Melanie McGee, and I'd like to say I am blessed to be the principal of Ted Polk Middle School. It is my honor to present to you the newest member of the Polk family's very important profession of teaching, Mrs. Amanda Peeler. This is Amanda's 11th year at Polk and in CFB, after teaching in Midland and Abilene. She currently teaches sixth grade science. For years, Amanda was a coach. Anyone familiar with middle school athletics know that you usually start with students who have no exposure to the sport. The job of the coach is to teach them the basics, help them feel confident, and push them beyond what they thought they could do. They do this all the while, being mindful of the fragile nature of adolescents. Even though she doesn't coach anymore, Amanda brings the same mindset to her classroom teaching. She's dedicated to her students' achievement, commented one colleague in describing her. Another stated that she knows her students well. Perhaps it's her upbringing as a child of the Army that creates in Amanda a desire to ensure that every student who walks into her classroom feels welcomed and competent. There is never a day where Amanda doesn't create excitement about the learning and find ways to ensure that students are engaged and successful. She was one of the first on our campus to try flipping the classroom using technology in new ways to challenge students. "Mrs. Peeler understands us and is funny in a learning way," said one of her sixth graders. "She's very helpful. If you ask her anything, she will make you understand it," said another. Outside of the classroom, Amanda has used those coaching skills in her roles as department manager, instructional facilitator, and as a member of Polk's instructional rounds team. Currently, she is mentoring a first-year teacher. Her husband Greg is a great supporter of her work. Her daughter Addison is a Blanton Bulldog kindergartner, and son Anthony will graduate from Newman Smith this year. Her family informs her work daily. As one student put it, "She treats us like we were her own kids." This is why Ted Polk Middle School and CFB are indeed fortunate to have Mrs. Amanda Peeler as a member of the very important profession of teaching.
Good evening, Dr. Burns, Mr. Good, and members of the board. I am Amy Miller, Rosemead Elementary principal, and I'm here tonight to introduce you to our newest member of the very important profession of teaching, Ms. Ellen Solov. How do I put into words the dedication of a teacher who has given 33 years to children? What do you say about a person who has spent the last 26 years changing the lives of students at Rosemead Elementary? Although her years of service speak volumes, that alone does not even begin to tell the full story. Ms. Solov has got to be one of the most thoughtful and dedicated teachers I have encountered in my career. She's soft-spoken, fair, compassionate, a hard worker, has high expectations, values families, is a team player, a planner, an eloquent communicator, and tirelessly dedicates her time to her students. Though this list is extensive, you'll probably also see her bringing donuts to math competition every year, even though she is the writing teacher. You'll see her at every Saturday school, going the extra mile so more students are successful. You'll probably see her leaving the building with a bag full of compositions because she just can't wait to see how the latest lesson impacted their student writing. Ms. Solov's colleagues also wanted to share. One teacher said, "She's the most diplomatic person I've ever met. I'd run any difficult conversation through Ellen, and she always had a nicer, more tactful way of saying it." We can always send kids to Ellen for a little behavior reminder, because she has a way of getting kids to know when they are wrong and still come out on the other side thinking she was the greatest teacher ever, and she is. She's quietly funny, hugely sincere, and amazingly kind, and one of my dearest and longest friends. They've laughed and cried together and had such great memories, including a wonderful trip to Arkansas, fourth-grade fun in Austin, which I've been a part of as well, and 25th anniversary video, Thanksgiving dinners, and just friendship like no other. Another teacher said, "There is no one more deserving of VIP recognition than you. The way you work with children is admirable, and I thoroughly enjoy working with you every day." Another teacher said, "Ellen is my mentor, an unforgettable and beloved teacher to my daughters, and was my cherished teammate. In her, I found a lifelong friend. Ellen is my VIP. She's a joy to work with every day, and we all wish her the very, very best. And I, along with countless others, truly appreciate her many contributions to Rosemead these past 26 years." Rosemead Elementary and CFB are indeed fortunate to have Ms. Ellen Solov as our newest member of the very important profession of teaching.
My name is Shashawn Campbell, principal of Thompson Elementary, and we are here tonight to introduce Chelsea McKinnon, our newest member of the very important profession The best way to know Chelsea is through the voices of her students, the children of Thompson Elementary. When I first saw her, I knew she was the one. She sang to us. Her voice was as soft as silk, and her eyes always twinkle when we walk out the door. I love going to music every day. I think she is doing hard work for us. I like listening to music because it makes me feel better and more calmed down. Music is for everything. She teaches us how to hear music in everything, games, movies, even the way we speak. After spending a year training at the most magical place on earth, Walt Disney World, Chelsea McKinnon joined the Thompson family. Over the last four years, she has brought with her a love of music and theater, inspiring our students in the arts. Her commitment and passion are demonstrated through sponsoring our choir, percussion ensemble, and providing piano lessons. When asked to describe Mrs. McKinnon, a student said, "She's strong, intelligent, never gives up." Another student stated, "She works hard for us to learn. She got the opera to come. She wants to give us more." Chelsea is extremely motivated and caring. These characteristics and commitment to excellence help inspire all of those who work with her. When asked to describe Chelsea, a staff member shared, "Chelsea can turn a group of kindergartners into a magical group of fairy tale creatures with just a wave of her wand." Well, that's how she makes it look anyways. She works tirelessly to ensure that all the students of Thompson Elementary have the very best. She even makes learning the recorder fun. Her love for music is infectious. Another staff member stated, "Chelsea is always finding new and creative ways to make learning about music more meaningful. The students love how she transforms our stage into a new world, beautiful enough to be on Broadway." She is an inspiration to her students and provides them with the tools and opportunities to achieve at the highest level. Chelsea is an asset to our campus, our team, and our students. As eloquently stated by one of her students, "Every school in America should have a music teacher like Mrs. McKinnon, but we're the lucky ones." Thompson Elementary and CFB are indeed blessed to have Mrs. Chelsea McKinnon as our member of very important profession of teaching. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Allow me a few comments, if you will, to our VIPs. It's always fascinating, almost unbelievable, the quality and the dedication we have in our teachers in this school district. And you, you as the audience have heard many of the comments that have been mentioned, but it really fails to convey the true value and significance of your accomplishments every day in the classroom. We, as a school board, realize you have more than just a couple of students to deal with. Matter of fact, hundreds. And yet, our goal of high achievement for all students is exemplified by you every day. And we are truly honored to be able to say thank you for being a part of Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD. And once again, I want to say thank you. I know you would love to spend the rest of the evening with us, however, tomorrow's another school day, and we are going to take a 10-minute break and reconvene at 7:40. So at this time, we are adjourned. Board members, ladies and gentlemen, this, our board meeting is reconvened again at 8:00, correction, 7:39 PM. Before we go on to the next agenda item, I'd like to remind the audience that's coming up shortly, anyone who would like to speak to the board regarding any issue or item may do so when we get to Agenda Item 4A, Audience for Guests. If you would like to address the board, if you would, please fill out the form that's outside the double doors and, and give that form to Ms. Scrivner, and at the appropriate time, when we get to that on our agenda, you will be called at that time to come and speak to the board. With that being said, we'll go to Agenda Item 3, which is a report by the superintendent. Dr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Good, and members of the board. As you know, each board meeting, each board meeting, we focus on an aspect of student achievement, and this year, we've been studying the book, How People Learn. So we're in our seventh, I think, presentation regarding that book, and tonight focuses on math and science. So with that introduction, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Warnock for a little bit more clarity, so.
Thank you, Dr. Burns, Mr. Good, members of the board. As we continue our learning about how people learn, we are reminded about symmetry in a learning organization. We know that a symmetrical learning organization has the same kind of learning expected of the adults in the organization as is expected from the children in the organization. And so, as we continue our study of how people learn tonight, we'll look into effective teaching in mathematics and science. The chapter that we're going to explore a bit this evening looks at some themes and connections in understanding mathematics and understanding science. And those are up here for us to see this evening, conceptual understanding, procedural understanding, and we believe that both of those are important to understanding mathematics and science. We have to understand the why, the big picture, the concept, but there's also important procedures in building fluency of procedures that are a part of both mathematics and science understanding. Another theme that we saw in the text were that the learning in these classrooms has to be interactive in order for deep learning to occur. The teacher is facilitator with the students, doing talk and reasoning. And then finally, we believe in big science, big reasoning and thinking, and we're going to invite Tanya Garvey, our mathematics director, and Susan Ship, our science director, to share a little bit about how we address these four themes in CFB.
Good evening.
Good evening. How we will learn and how people learn, all that conceptual and procedural understanding is something that we have to balance when we're talking about mathematical instruction and what we're looking for. And that's what we're trying to do, and develop that why piece of it so that we can get through here. What I want to show you right now is a little clip that kind of gives us an idea of how long we've been dealing with this why piece with mathematics and what we're doing here.
Your son, Opie Taylor, unsatisfactory.
Oh, that's just kind of a form letter.
D?
He's going to study some more.
Well, I'd say he has to study a lot more. You're letting him go play football?
Sure.
Well, it's none of my business. You're the boy's father. It's unbelievable.
What?
Nothing. This day and age, I think, a kid failing, they're going to go do it. I don't know.
You going to tell me what you're mumbling about?
Well, Andy, if your boy is failing in arithmetic, you'd think you'd have him studying all the time.
Oh, he's going to study.
Okay, okay. Arithmetic, probably the most important subject there is. How do you expect this country to maintain its position in world leadership if our kids are flunking arithmetic?
He's not flunking, and I'm going to work with him.
Are you qualified?
It's just long division. I think I can handle that.
Well, for Opie's sake, I certainly hope so.
How you doing, Op?
Well, hi, Paul. I'm working.
That's good. Suppose we take a little turn at that long division we was talking about.
Oh, okay.
Now, the main thing in studying any subject is to understand exactly what you're doing all the time.
I know.
Just understand it step by step. Now suppose we start with a, with a simple problem. We'll take, say, 14, and we'll divide that into, oh, 169.
Okay.
Okay. Now put your 14 down on the left, draw your line up and over, and then put your 169 under there.
Why do you do that, Paul?
Because that's the way you do it.
But when we give an answer, we have to tell why we do something.
Oh.
Ms. Crump says we'll never be able to do higher mathematics later on unless we know why we do things.
Oh, well, that makes sense. That certainly makes sense. The reason that you put the 14 down on the left like that is, uh, 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 is because, uh, that's the rule.
But she'll ask us why you put it on the left instead of the right.
She will.
Yeah.
Well, uh, we probably better not tackle too much the first night, just wait. Draw your line up and over, and shove your 169 under there.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Now, how many times 14 goes to 60?
Once.
What you want on top there? Okay, now what you got left over?
Uh, one times 14 is 14 subtract, and two left over.
That's it.
And down the nine.
Hang down your nine. That's good. Now, how many times 14 goes to 29?
14 goes into 29. 14 twice.
Twice. That's it. Now, what you got left over?
Well, two times four is eight, and two times one is two, and subtract, and have one left over.
That's a time. That's it. That's it. Now, put down a decimal point and two zeros.
Why?
What do you mean, why?
Just why.
Well, uh, you put down your decimal point because you're going to put down two zeros after that. And, well, the reason you put down a decimal point and two zeros is so's that you can, uh, you can keep dividing, see, and shove that number on out there. And that way, you can keep thinking about it and, and, and working on it and, and everything until you finally get it done. Do you understand?
No.
Well, it'll come to you. That's probably enough for tonight. These things have a way of, of clearing up suddenly sometimes.
Oh, there you are. I wondered where you were.
Well, we were just going over a few things.
Oh, I'm glad you're starting your homework early.
Yeah.
If you have any problems, you just ask your father. He'll help you.
So as we see, this is not anything new as far, as far as the difficulty with the why and how hard it is when they come in. But we still want to develop that so that that conceptual and that procedural knowledge is blended together and balanced. So when we look at our new math standards, and we look at our second grade and how, what we're doing in second grade that leads into multiplication, we look here and we say, "What do we see right here?" We see seven groups, uh, seven groups of five, all right? We don't see five groups of seven. We deal with this in context when we're talking about teams with mathematical competition, when we look at how we develop and divide out people to make up our teams. When we move on to multiplication, we know that seven times five is the same as five times seven. However, when we're grouping and we talk about it in context, it's not. And that's what we want to get across to students. We use a closed array to model some of this thinking. And we start with seven rows and five columns, and then we have the students count out to 35. We do not end here with our multiplication. We go on to have them work in third grade on seven times five is 35. However, we want to model for them so that they have something concrete to use to start with. And then we work on that for their numerical fluency, so they have tools to use as things get a little bit more difficult. We move on as they go on to other things, and they can use any kind of tool they need or any kind of strategy in order for them to have a true understanding. This is their math, their numerical fluency. We also want them to have automaticity, which is the speed at which they know their multiplication facts. But their numerical fluency is what they use as they go on through and work through more rigorous problems. We then can move to the open array for five times 17. If you look here, the number 17 is decomposed into 10 plus 7. We then multiply 5 times 10 is 50, and 5 times 7 is 35. We add those together for the total area to be 85. Now, you may be thinking, "What if you don't have to do all of that?" Well, okay, you own 17 times 5. But using this open array, as things get more difficult, you have a tool and a strategy to use and a model to have something concrete for students to be able to grab a hold of. And then, for those of us that move into high school and middle school, we look at how this, when we decompose a number, and how we use that to multiply, how that leads into the distributive property and gives them something to anchor with because they have 5 times 10 plus 7, which makes sense of why the distributive property works. And then we can move into variables and unknowns being used based on the idea that they understand their numbers. Again, their solid understanding of numerical fluency develops the thinking that they use in order for them to be able to tackle problems they have not seen before, to use it and to apply it in situations they may not be familiar with, so that they become mathematical and analytical thinkers. And that's our goal. That's our goal. For each student in CFB to be mathematical thinkers and successful in their mathematics.
Now, for science education, in the science section of Chapter 7, we talk about science for all children. And as you take a look at big idea thinking, our understanding for design is our big idea thinking. We frame that for our teachers to help them as they plan and work. Learning communities. In our learning communities, in science class, we have labs where students work in groups. We have students thinking, planning. We have accountable talk that occurs in the science classes so they are working together in much of what they do. Now, critical thinking is extremely important for our students because there are many times that our students develop or come into our classrooms with misconceptions. And the more that we can get our students to understand the concepts, the science concepts, then they have that ability to apply those concepts to new situations and have confidence in their thinking. So as we take a look at some misconceptions that we see that students have, you know, we look at that beautiful picture, and what do we say to our children and our grandchildren about what we're seeing here? Well, we say, "The sun is rising. How beautiful." And so then, when we get the kids in kindergarten and first grade, we need to teach them what causes night and day. And students with misconceptions will say things like, "I think it's daytime when the sun comes up and nighttime when the sun goes down." And some even say the sun goes beneath the earth. The sun goes around the earth once a day, so when it comes on our side of the earth, we have daytime. And we also hear, "We have daytime when the sun comes up, and we have nighttime when the moon comes out." So these are very common misconceptions that we hear in kindergarten and first grade. So our teachers have to work really hard because they need our students to understand that the earth spins on its axis once a day, and that's why we have day and night. It can take us a couple of years to change that misconception. And as we all know as adults, as we grow and have our own families and children, we go right back to saying, "Look at the sun rising." So the more our students understand the concepts, the better able they are to get past some of our misconceptions. Now, in the How People Learn book, they also stress writing strategies. And in science education, we have been writing for many, many years. Our science notebooking is throughout elementary, middle, and high school. We have quick writes. We have open-ended responses. We use our content literacy strategies in all grade levels. And we are now using our claim, evidence, and reasoning, our CERs. And this is a writing genre. I have vetted it through our language arts director, and she was very excited when she saw the type of scientific writing that we are doing with our students. And I want to show you some of the work that our students have been doing. We introduced this in middle school about five years ago, and we brought it into high school last year, and we brought it into elementary school this school year. So let's take a look at the components. So the components, it's made up the claim, which is about the problem, the evidence that, that it provides evidence for the claim, and then the reasoning that links the evidence and the claim and provides that scientific reasoning. So as we take a look at the claim, this is a piece of fifth grade writing. The claim is the assertion or the conclusion that answers the original question. So the students were given some information about renewable and non-renewable resources. They've been studying it in that particular unit. And they are asked to use the data to answer the question. If the United States has a goal of conserving non-renewable resources, are we meeting the goal? So the child had to look at the information. They had to know what was renewable and what was non-renewable, and they had to use some of their math skills to decide what their claim was going to be. And this fifth grade student was able to write a complete sentence, "No, the United States is not conserving non-renewable resources." This is an excellent claim for a scientist. Now, in evidence. In evidence, scientific data that supports the claim, it can come from an investigation or other sources such as observations, reading materials, archived materials, or other. So what we just saw previously was archived material that students used. So for evidence, we're going to look at a CER, Claim Evidence and Reasoning, from chemistry. It was metals, non-metals, and metalloids. And the students conducted a lab, and they had unknown materials. They had to decide if it was metal, non-metal, and metalloids. And so the next day, the teacher then provided them this CER. So the teacher now is giving them data, and they have to transfer what they learned the day before to this new piece of information. And in their CER, they had to tell us whether it was metal, non-metal, and metalloids. So in the evidence piece, this is not fancy English-type writing. We don't have all that flowery language. A scientist gets to the point. Can they understand their evidence and write it out for us? So you can see this student was able to do that. Sample X is shiny, conducts electricity, is bendable, and reacts with acid. And the student was able to go through with sample Y and sample Z. Now, if I were scoring this piece of work, I would not give the student full credit because the student missed a piece of evidence for each sample from the data table. They missed color. The student didn't identify color in any one of the examples. And as we think about what our students need to have as they prepare, prepare for testing, whether it's a unit test or whether it's a star test, EOC test, they have to be able to interpret information in data charts, in graphs, in diagrams. And so this is a good spot for a teacher to bring that out to the student. You missed something in here. Reasoning. Reasoning is the most difficult piece. Reasoning is where the child has to transfer what they've been learning into their writing. And our students struggle with that piece. This is an eighth grade piece. The, in reasoning, it's justification that links the claim to the evidence, and it includes appropriate scientific principles. So the students were given this diagram, the Bohr model, of two elements. We're looking at the electrons in the outer electron shells, and so their unit of study has been learning about doing this. And the question is, "Which of the elements represented in the Bohr model above is more reactive?" And so the students, in their reasoning piece, were able to identify if an element has a full shell, then the element can't be changed easily. But if it isn't a full shell, it makes it easier to change or react to other elements. That's what they learned in this particular unit. But that's not what I highlighted. What I highlighted here for you is how this student was able to bring in information from the previous unit on the periodic table and has a greater understanding, being able to pull two ideas together and show their critical thinking piece. Because they brought in that they can, says you can find how reactive it is by looking at the periodic table of elements. So that shows this student has gone well beyond what the teacher expected them to learn. So this is great information for teachers. And I tell you, a multiple choice test is not going to tell the teacher what the student writing has told. Now, we work with our students that they are writing like a scientist. A scientist has to look at the evidence and has to make that claim. And an "I think" or an "I believe" statement is saying that you might not be really sure. And so we try to steer our students away. This student should have started with "I disagree" in their claim instead of "I think." And so the teacher's going to give them feedback on that particular piece. We also find out information about misconceptions. Now, the same CER with the plant and animal cell comparison. When the student got down to her reasoning, she was able to talk about some things that the plant has, like the plant has chloroplast that has glucose in it. But what I've highlighted here is a huge misconception that, again, a multiple choice test isn't going to tell me that the child thinks that animal cells don't have glucose, that animals aren't using glucose. And if the teacher doesn't address this here in sixth grade, it's not going to be addressed again until biology. And that's a long time to have this misconception. So the writing shows us what the teacher needs to address with this student, and I would say with the whole class, to make sure that's clear, that the students know that both animal and plants use glucose for food energy. Now, our next step, what we want to move our students into is taking that scaffolding of the claim, evidence, reasoning piece, and putting it into a complete paragraph or putting it into an essay, a three-to-four paragraph essay. This is a piece of biology work where the teacher is, has begun with his students to have them move into a complete paragraph where you still have your claim, your evidence, and your reasoning piece. And so that is where we're at with science in terms of helping our students transfer learning, you know, the fun lab stuff that the kids enjoy. But when you ask them when they come home what they did, and they tell you really fun stuff in science, well, now we want them to know what they're learning, what the concepts are, how they are, how they transfer that fun stuff to what they're learning. Thank you.
So as we go back, we hope we've highlighted some, what conceptual and procedural understanding are, how we're building that along with reasoning and thinking skills in our students in mathematics and science. Dr. Burns, Mr. Good, that concludes our report.
Bishop, could you go back and bring up the screen that we're teaching our students why there's daylight and nighttime?
So you want?
Yes, that's the one. And I think this would be a good critical thinking exercise. I'm understanding, Dr. Burns, that we're teaching our students that we have daytime and nighttime because the earth rotates one time in 24 hours. And that can't be correct. And the reason it can't be correct is, in the absence of the sun, we're not going to have daytime. But according to that statement, the sun is irrelevant. And I'm pointing this out because if we want our students to be exercising critical thinking, then we need to be doing the same thing.
Absolutely.
I'm not jumping on you, but I read that, and I turned to Mr. Shakman, and I said, "That can't be right." And I am not saying, "I think that can't be right." I'm saying, "That ain't right."
Well, I'm putting the sun back up there.
Thank you. Now we'll teach our students the correct stuff.
And what we have to get our kids to understand, it's the earth that's moving, whether rotating or revolving.
I have no doubts that we're doing as capable a job as can be done. But we can't be portraying that as something that we're teaching our kids, or the world is going to say, "What the heck are they teaching students?" And I'm highlighting this, that we, all of us, have to constantly be scrutinizing what we're teaching, what we say, and what we write.
Absolutely. And that's why we want to make sure you don't tell your kids anymore that the sun comes up and the sun comes down. So we are boycotting any.
Okay.
Because the sun doesn't come out tomorrow. Okay? It rolls around.
Board members, other questions? If I may, I do have one question. And this goes back to pedagogy. For example, new teachers that are going into math, are they fully instructed on conceptual and procedural concepts? Because in my mind, that is something relatively new. And as I read it in the book, in chapter seven, I started thinking about that because when I look at the board here, when I talk about conceptual and procedural, most of us would say, "What are they talking about?" So I wonder whether our new teachers who are coming into our district are adequately prepared to teach these ideas this way.
Yes. We bring them in at the beginning in August?
We bring them in at the beginning of August, and then we have pull-out days. We have Math Mondays, and we go through this over and over, not to mention there are coaches that work with them and plan with them and study with them in their P L Cs in the P D periods.
And this is also true of science when we talk about claim, evidence, and reasoning. That it's something that we, as a district, are helping those new teachers to be adequately prepared when they go into the classroom.
With fifth grade this year, we introduced it to fifth grade. We actually had a pull-out day where we trained every single fifth-grade teacher in the district. And last year, with our high school science, in our August in-service, it was three hours of training, and then we followed up in every P D session that we had with high school. With our middle school, who we, they were our guinea pigs, started five years ago, again, we had a pull-out where we pulled them all out. And now for new people coming in, it is built in as a part of the new teacher training. I have them for six and a half hours, and that is a portion of the training that they get there. We also are providing next-step, next-step C E R training to help teachers work on their ability to give feedback. Because you're talking about science teachers and, you know, reading papers and giving feedback was like, "Oh, my God, how do we do this?" And so we're working with them on how to go about giving the feedback, how to make the time in reading the students' work not so overwhelming that they don't feel they can do it. So we're working with all those aspects to make it successful.
Mr. Good, I would add to that, that for both mathematics and science, we have our new hire academy, which the new hires to the district spend some time with, and all contents have that, you know, every teacher spends time specialized with their content director. And then we also have Math and Science Institute, which this year we're rolling into our Learn More, Achieve More Summer Conference. But it's time where we have introductory training for new hires, and then we have differentiated training for teachers that have more experience to continue deepening their understanding.
Okay. Let me go back to that. I know that, I believe, next month, we're having a job fair, or is it?
April.
April, having a job fair. And in my crystal ball, we will probably hire maybe 300 new teachers, something like that. When we look at these new teachers, what are your expectations? I'm talking about a new teacher, and you have to qualify whether it's new to the profession or new to C F B. Do you have certain levels of expectation for new teachers, what they should know when they come to C F B I S D?
Our content directors partner with our principals to talk to them about their conceptual understanding, their content knowledge. But we also believe that we will, we're responsible for training and developing the staff that come to us. So when we have a candidate who has a good foundation in their content, but has the attitude of willingness to learn, willingness to grow, and really develop relationships with students, we will invest in building their content and strategy knowledge.
Okay, very good. I think you appreciate and understand that this board has a rather high expectation of the new teachers that we hire because that expectation is translated into our goal also.
Absolutely.
Very good, thank you. Board members, other questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is Agenda Item 4A, which is Audience for Guest. Ms. Grivner, are there any Audience for Guest?
I have none.
Very good. I will therefore defer reading the information regarding that, and we'll go on to Agenda Item 4B, the Consent Agenda. Board members, as we've stated previously, the Consent Agenda is just a mechanism that we use to approve a number of routine items on a single vote, which is, of course, in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. And of course, these items are of general nature. However, you've had the opportunity to review, and at this time, are there any items you would like to pull for further discussion? Mr. Shore?
I can't remember if I want to pull three or four. Which one did I want to pull?
Four, I believe.
Four.
Mr. Shore, it is his four.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Four, meaning the item number four, not five.
That's right.
Any other items? Hearing none, seeing none. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda with the removal of Agenda Item 4? Ms. Klein?
So we've got...
I have a motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Matthews? All those in favor, please signify by saying, raising your hand. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. We will now go back to Agenda Item 4B4, which is Consider Approval Changes to the Following Board Policy, FDB Local, first reading. Mr. Shore?
Yes, Mr. Good, thank you. The board members know this, but for the listening audience, this deals with the issue of when a student who is about to start attending a high school or is transferring into this district from another school district, and they go to a high school that is not the high school in their designated attendance zone, and their eligibility vel non, which is Latin for "or not," to participate in extracurricular activities, athletics. And so that's the background of this. And I think that part of the difficulty that everyone has had in grappling with this issue is when we use the word "transfer" to describe something. And so for that reason, the administration has furnished us with an alternative that appears in blue ink and red ink. And I think that that more succinctly describes the situation that this board member would be in favor of. The remaining five of you are certainly entitled to your respective opinions. But when a student who is either first entering the district or moving from eighth grade to ninth grade enrolls in a career academy or a C T E pathway at the student's first opportunity is not, in this person's opinion, considered to be a transfer. And I think the language that the administration has given us in the second alternative is the language that I would certainly sponsor, and you all have it in front of you. When I make my motion, I'm also going to suggest that we delete the word "other" in the second sentence. Now I'll be quiet.
Very good. Board members, discussion? Ms. Klein?
Mr. Shore, so you're deleting the "all other student transfers"?
Just the word "other."
Just the "other." So all student, okay. And then my question to the administration is, could you please list out the career academies and the C T E pathways and what schools are at?
Yes, ma'am.
Just for your knowledge or in the policy? Okay.
Sure. At R.L. Turner, the academies would include the Biomedical Academy, Academy of Biomedical Sciences, to be precise, the Academy for Media Arts and Technology, and the Metza, or Math Engineering Technology and Science Academy. It would also include at Newman Smith, the International Business Academy, and at Crete View High School, the Law and Criminal Justice Academy. International Baccalaureate would be included also in this at Ranch View High School. The C T E pathways would include the Culinary Arts Pathway, the Science and Engineering Pathway.
So the Culinary Arts is at Newman Smith?
Newman Smith.
Just there?
So at Newman Smith. We have Cosmetology at R.L. Turner High School. We also have Automotive Technician and Automotive Collision Repair at R.L. Turner High School, and Automotive Technician at Crete View High School. Those programs generally are concurrent enrollment programs, meaning the student choosing to attend that probably will remain enrolled at their home campus and be bused only for that course. But sometimes students do choose to transfer for those C T E pathways.
What about the engineering one at Newman Smith?
The Science and Engineering Pathway and Culinary Arts would be the two at Newman Smith.
As far as ROTC is considered?
ROTC is considered a citizenship program. It doesn't fall under the Career Academy designation or Career Pathway designation. And most students that are in ROTC, again, are concurrently enrolled at their home campus, and they're transported to R.L. Turner to participate in ROTC.
Okay.
Thank you.
Board members, other questions? Seeing none. Mr. Shore, if you would, since you have made that motion, if you would like to read that correction in its entirety so that we will know what you are asking us to vote on?
Okay, that's fair. I move that we revise the language of FDB Local to read as follows. Well, I'm going to dictate it into the non-record. "A student who enrolls in a career academy or C T E pathway shall not be considered a transfer student so long as the school is selected at the student's first opportunity. All student transfers to a career academy or C T E pathway shall be in accordance with regular transfers as described below." And I added the words "as described."
Very good. Those are the corrections. Ms. Klein?
Mr. Shore added another word when he read it. He added "student" at the end of, oh, it's larger, but "transfer student so long as the school." Did you mean to add that?
Yes, because "transfer" can be a noun when we're describing the word "transfer," but you're really talking about a "transfer student."
Very good. Board members, I think you've heard it read and made as a motion for the final language of our new FDB Local policy. Do I have? Ms. Klein?
I'm curious. I'm kind of confused. What does the last sentence mean, Mr. Shore?
Well, I think that is an exquisite question because I debated in my mind last weekend whether that sentence added anything. And candidly, I think if we delete the word "other," it does add something. But what it means with the word "other" deleted is that all student transfers have to be in accordance with our policy that's contained in FDB Local. And so all we're saying is, we're going to require students to comply with the transfer policies when they're a transfer.
But you're saying they aren't transfers?
What this proposed language does is it eliminates a student who enrolls in a C T E pathway or a career academy at their first opportunity from being considered a transfer. That's what it does.
So a student transferring to one of these, the academy or the C T E pathway, that should be in accordance with that, would, an example of that would be someone doing it not at their first opportunity?
That's a transfer.
Okay. I'm clear now.
Okay. Board members, other questions?
And it's not a question. I'm sorry for blurting out. The importance of this is that if it's a transfer, the student is not going to be playing athletics for a year.
Would be ineligible for varsity athletics. They still be eligible for sub varsity.
And so that's the import, that's the import of what's being discussed in the horseshoe right now.
Ms. Klein?
Dr. Burns said, right? Ms. Klein?
Yeah.
Varsity athletics.
They're still, they'll still be eligible for sub varsity as in compliance with the guidelines.
Okay.
Does this work for administration if someone changes their mind about the academy they're at and wants to go back? Is that covered?
Well, what we would say is this policy gives us enough direction. We'll have some administrative regulations and procedures, and we'll deal with those accordingly. Also, you know, in terms of if there's some kind of, I guess, covert activity to do it within or outside the rules it should be. But we'll put that in procedures. We think that's probably too delicate and too individualized to put in the policy.
Dr. Burns, if I could add, that would be on the return, that they would be ineligible for one calendar year per the U I L rules for varsity athletics. So, but again, I'd echo what Dr. Burns said about that being following U I L guidelines and then in... and then in regulation.
And that's already there, really, for us to do.
And the beauty of that is that the student should, the student and the adults who are giving guidance to the student should scrutinize carefully. Do they want to participate in the academy or the CTE pathway? And so the looming elimination of a year of varsity participation should cause the prospective applicant to a career pathway or CTE, career academy or CTE pathway, to scrutinize that decision very carefully. And that's what we want them doing. We don't want them applying on a lark, I don't think.
Other questions, comments? Mr. Shakman, do you have something?
Well, no, not related to that. We don't have a parliamentarian, and we have a motion on the day, and technically, we can't discuss it till he either dies or we get a second. Then we discuss it, and then we vote.
Well, but we can continue to discuss this matter since we have not voted yet.
Understand, but we need a second to the motion.
Not to discuss it.
Okay.
We can still discuss it without taking a second. By Robert's Rules of Orders, our discussion can be after we have taken a second or before the second. And so that's why I've allowed this discussion now. If there's no further discussion, we have had a motion by Mr. Shore. Do I have a second to approve this policy?
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Mr. Good, our policy requires two readings, so you will see this again, okay? But we will put it on consent, because unless there's something, you know, kind of, I don't know, radically happens between now and the next time, it will be back on the consent as a second reading. You have not made a motion to make a waiver of that second reading. I'm correct?
Right. With that, we'll move on to Agenda Item Five, which is Comments from Board Members. Board members, are there, do you have any comments regarding posted agenda items for Hearing none, seeing none, we will move on. Our next agenda item is Closed Meeting. Dr. Burns, do we have anything for Closed Meeting?
No, sir, we do not.
That being said, by my determination, we have reached the end of our agenda, and we are adjourned at 8:24 PM.